Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on December the ninth, 2024 at 7:00 PM here at the Downers Grove Civic Center. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the Village of Downers Grove's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please co-roll?
Member Joshi.
Here.
Member Ellis.
Here.
Member Hannah.
Here.
Member Harris.
Here.
Member Olchikis Abseth. Member Weiner.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here. Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide public comment later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to make a comment to please fill out a card over there on that table and please place it in the basket. I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment. All right, we're going to go ahead and start out as we always do with the pledge. So I'd like to welcome the students from Lester Elementary to lead us in the pledge.
Liches to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Principal Novosel. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you very much for having us. We have a lot of fun, exciting things to share with you all today. I'm going to start off by introducing Mr. Smoke. He is our, one of our leads of our student council and he will get started with introducing all the great things our student council does.
Hello, I'd like to introduce our, our class officers for 2425. We have President Gabe Wingard. We have Vice President Braden Cody. We have Secretary Sean Egan and Treasurer Rory Egan. And they're going to share some of the stuff that we're doing at Lester as a student council.
Pie in the Face. In November, student council raised some dough by selling tickets for a chance to throw a pie of whipped cream and our P.E. teacher, Mrs. Crappowitz. We raised over $2,100 that went to holiday gift cards for local families in need.
The Giving Tree. From December ninth through the nineteenth, we bring warmth and cheer to local families by collecting new hats, mittens, scarves, and toys. These items will decorate the tree in our front hall and will be donated to the Downers Grove Sharing Connections and People's Resource Center. More to come. In January, we plan to collect food for our, for the Super Bowl. We are excited to plan for our spring drive soon.
Our students are much better about technology than I am. I skipped a slide. All right.
First October. In October, we collected colorful socks, colorful socks for the Halle Strong Foundation to bring comfort and joy to cancer patients. We collected over 600 pairs of socks.
Blankets of Hope. We also collected money for Blankets of Hope. For every $5 raised is a new blanket. A new blanket was donated to the DuPage Pass Interim Housing Center in Downers Grove. Lester raised over $1,000, enough for 200 blankets.
Thank you, guys. I would highlight one other thing that we have coming up in this new year. I've been reading The Anxious Generation and so we're going to work as officers and find out some way that we can kind of get off our screens and get connected with one another and have a little less anxiety. So they will be leading us not only in fundraising, but in making a difference in how we relate and care for each other. So, thank you, guys, for being here.
All right, next we have our PTA President Sarah Shad and our PTA Vice President, President-elect Julia Mizurick.
Hey, everybody, I'm Sarah Shad. I'm the Lester PTA President. We're excited to be here today to share some different engagement opportunities that we have for our families at Lester. Right now, about 65% of Lester families are PTA members. We do firmly stand for PTA access for all. So all of our families are able to join the PTA for free and participate in any other activities such as fun lunch for free and purchase other tickets for events free of charge for them. We set up a free code for them, so all they have to do is log it online and that goes, you know, zero charge for everything with that. One of the things we've also done this year was our volunteer interest survey. In the past, we found that our parents might have been hesitant to sign up for a committee or lead a committee because who knows what that entails, right? So this year, we set up a volunteer interest survey that enlisted everything from love of spreadsheets to baking to event support. And parents were able to check whatever they're interested in doing. And then we took that and mashed it to our PTA and school needs. So parents were really joining committees. They just didn't know that they were joining committees at the time, but it was a great way to, to match their interests with what our needs were. And that was very successful for that, for us this year. We also have a lot of different fundraising experiences each year. In the fall alone, we had over 35 fundraising experiences, which brings in funds for the school, but also brings people together. You see pictured our Halloween experience. It was the week before Halloween. They went trick-or-treating down Davis Street and then had a play date at the Secret Park. So it was a great opportunity for the kindergarten families to get involved, get engaged, meet each other, and you know, just come out and have fun. We'll have more experiences later on in the year as well. But there are anything for parents nights out to kid activities. And this will also segue to our fundraising plan. Is it Julia?
Hi, thanks for having us. My name is Julia Mizurick and I head up fundraising for the Lester PTA and I will take on as PTA President next year. So we're extremely fortunate to be in a very engaged and generous parent Lester community as well as kind of the greater community at large. So we're extremely fortunate that we are able to operate a high programming budget. So we really have three main buckets of fundraising. The first is our two flagship events, our Fun Run, which is a family-friendly one-mile and 5K walk run. And the second is our adults-only winter fundraiser, which happens in February. And the second bucket is sponsorship. And this is really something that we're extremely proud of how we've overhauled this. Am I on the wrong floor? Yes, I am. Oh, no, we're good. Okay. Thank you. We've really kind of completely disrupted the way that we went to the community with sponsorship in the last two years. What we realized is that we had a lot of independent committees, you know, reaching out to this person, but not this person and not really creating an opportunity for local businesses and parents who own or are leaders in their own businesses to have the opportunity to support the Lester community. So that's really been a hugely successful program for us. And those sponsorship dollars allow us to underwrite the two, the two fun events, which then all of those events bring in additional funds and, and community growth opportunities through things like the experiences that Sarah mentioned. And then the third bucket of our fundraising comes from, you know, kind of all the other things like the dine-outs and the, you know, shopping with a percentage back to the, to the PTA and other types of community engagement. So, thank you.
And then these fundraisings, fundraising, fundraising events that we do, we're able to have an annual budget of around $70,000 for programs that go directly back to the school. We have typical events like the Culture Night. We fund field trips and assemblies, the variety show, family reading night. One of the things that we are most proud of is our special person events. We hold two events each spring where students can choose to attend one event. And then they choose which special person they want to bring with them. This is a great way to offer inclusivity to all of our students. We have boys and girls that go to the dance. They might bring their aunt, uncle, older brother, but it's a great way to get them all involved and not have anybody feel left out. We also have fun lunch and then each of our teachers are provided with a classroom teacher fund to purchase enrichment supplies that otherwise might not be covered. So that is a little bit about the PTA. Thanks again for having us, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys, very much. You did a lovely job. We are now getting into talking more about our Lester school data and our school improvement plan. So I will get us started. For our spring data, we did have some great growth. We had for our MAP and AMES Web, we had expected growth. And then for IAR, for ELA and math, we actually had higher than expected growth. For fall data, we also had our, our AMES Web and MAP testing. We did have expected growth in math and reading. Just to give you an idea, what we usually do is our instructional leadership team. In the spring, we look at that data. We determine kind of what our plan is for the next year, what our focus will be, and we look at different areas of growth. And that's kind of what I'll talk through some of these charts to kind of explain what that looks like. So this first set of charts you'll see are the grade level charts for math and reading. And this is our fall data. So this is the data that we would look at at our Tier One Fall Meetings. So our grade level teams would look at this. They would see kind of where their grade level falls. And then they would kind of delve further into their specific grade level to see are there specific areas we should be focusing on for core curriculum, hitting a little bit harder, things like that. Our instructional leadership team also looks at this data just to kind of see, is there anything as a whole building that we should be really looking at? Is there something that we're noticing, trends, things like that? This is another chart that we find really helpful in Accra. And this chart is the insights. So every grade level, if you go to reading or math, will show you then specific insights as to where students perform. So this is helpful to show us if there are bands of different standards where maybe we don't have as high performing. And then we kind of talk through what we can do to help that. Another chart that we look at with our grade level Tier One conversations are the map reports. We look at our grade level and class map reports. This report shows specifically different strands of Common Core standards and where our students fell. So we do have a high-performing population, but our higher grade levels have tended to fall a little bit in terms of growth. And so that's something that we've always kind of kept an eye on. It's something that our instructional leadership team talks about frequently. But we noticed that a lot of our older grades tended to not have as high performing in our operations and algebraic thinking. That was a kind of a consistent thing that we saw in our data. So because of that, we planned for our second school improvement goal. But I will first tell you our first school improvement goal. So our first school improvement goal is our ELA goal. And this is our implementation of our new ELA curriculum. So we have Benchmark, U-Fly, and Common Lit. Our teachers are participating in the unit previews. Actually, we just had one today during our Professional Learning Mondays where they kind of get to see ahead of time what does the upcoming unit look like, our instructional coaches talk through, what should they be expecting? What are some areas that they should be aware of? We also participate in a monthly discussion about the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan. And we kind of talk about different components and break that apart and how that connects with our new curriculum. Our second goal, as I was just talking about, was created by our instruction, instructional leadership team. This goal is to focus on metacognitive strategies specifically during math instruction, but we've kind of enhanced that to all day. But also to focus on that mathematical practice to construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. So essentially what our instructional leadership team has done is we chose this goal because it does improve problem-solving skills. It improves students being able to think about what they're thinking and then share that process so that they can change their minds about maybe any misconceptions they're having in math, rethink their process, and potentially make adjustments to how they're solving problems. So our instructional leadership team has done a fantastic job of planning our professional learning. We have little snippets of time during faculty meetings, during Professional Learning Mondays, where they are sharing different research articles about what metacognition is, how it helps our students, how students can utilize it during our school day without adding more. So it's been a lot of how can we use our current curriculum to enhance use of those strategies within our classroom? And then we have one more goal area. We have one more goal area that Dr. Smith will be sharing with you.
All right. I'm Lori Smith, the Assistant Principal at Lester School. And our third goal area is incorporating the Zones of Regulation curriculum in connection with Second Step, the Tenants of PBSS, and our school rules, be responsible, be respectful, and be safe during the 2425 school year to promote social, emotional learning and positive behavior across the school. So just like our academicals, we have a Positive Behavior Committee that is helping us spearhead this work in our building. And we meet regularly and they are truly the ones who are helping us carry out the professional learning with our staff. And they're, they're looking at data and determining where we want to go in terms of behavior and our expectations and things like that. So one of the first and biggest shifts we've done this year is implementing the Zones of Regulation as a school-wide implementation. And that is new for everyone this year, but also as building leaders, we're trying to incorporate it in everything we do. So it's in our hallways, on the bulletin boards, talking about the different zones, how to find ways to regulate depending on the zone they are in. When we're reflecting on unexpected behaviors or if students are just regulated, we're talking about the zones and talking about ways to bring ourselves back into a comfortable and safe state. There we go. All right. Another piece to what our Behavior Committee has been working on is consistent expectations across the building. So we're looking at those common areas. We have, we just added a new area this year. This is work that is ongoing from last year, but we just added the recess expectations. But what we did was we broke down those common areas and looked at all of our, our school rules and what those specifically look like in those areas so that everyone's having the same language, same expectations, and students are not surprised. They're hearing this information, they're seeing it in all of these different areas. And we're able to stay consistent and students know the rules and no matter where they are in the building. And what I forgot to mention too is those behavior matrices are reviewed with the teachers. They're presented by us initially in the beginning of the year, but they're also reviewed by the teachers on a regular basis. We review them after like long breaks. We review them at least once monthly with the classrooms. And each classroom has their own slideshow where they talked about each matrix specifically and what it means for them as a class. So they use that as the driving force of that conversation. Another thing we do is we do our school-wide announcements. Something that's unique about our announcements is we do them as video announcements. And that came as a suggestion from our staff in trying to build some community. And it has been so much fun and very successful. And students are also guest speakers on our announcements every day. And students not only help us do the announcements, but they're also helping us review with the whole school what the character trait of the month is. Every single day, we also pick a different expectation to review too. Sometimes it's expectations that we need to review based on things that are going on in the building, like maybe walking your bike down the sidewalk, things like that. If we're noticing something's happening and we're trying to be preventative. But then sometimes if, if there's not a specific thing, we're just reviewing things over and over. So we might look at the bathroom and just talk about what it looks like to be respectful in the bathroom. So we're doing those as part of our announcements. And the other thing we do as part of our announcements is we not only announce students' birthdays, but we also announce students who are being spotted being good. And what that is, that's our school-wide token system. And students can earn spotted if they are showing good character. We have character traits, monthly character traits that we teach the students. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. But on these Spotted Being Good tickets, it identifies what they're spotted being good for. And then they turn and they bring it down to the office, drop it in the box. They're really excited. Our secretaries make a big deal about it. And then we post them on the bulletin board. And then once a month, we have monthly expectations celebrations where we kind of use those tickets as like raffle tickets. And the students come up and they pick a prize if they get picked. They're very excited. You can see their face when they walk in. We play music, we make it a big fun event. And you know, at these expectations assemblies too, we also review what expectation the character trait of the month was before, the month before. And then we go over the new character trait of the month, which ties into our expectations. So we're constantly, constantly reinforcing positive behaviors and good character at Lester School. And it has all combined been a very successful experience this year. And I think.
I wanted to say thank you so much for having us. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. We appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
And for our student council members, we have some gifts for you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, listed on tonight's agenda are four communications received by the board. Are there any additional communications a board member would like to share at this time? Okay. That brings us to the reports to the board. We're going to go ahead and start off with Superintendent Report.
Thank you. For personnel, one of the things in prior years, this was the time we represent the upcoming school calendar to the Board of Education. Last December, we approved two years' worth of calendar. So our board has already approved the 2526 school calendar and that's available on the district's website. It's a good reminder for everyone that this will be our long summer for construction with the last day of student attendance for this year scheduled on Friday, May 23rd before Memorial Day. And the first day of student attendance for the next school year planned is Tuesday, September 2nd after Labor Day. So this will be our long summer. The following summer again will be the shorter summer, but we won't talk about that right now. We'll just talk about that. However, we hope to bring the 2627 calendar to the board for approval in either March or April. District 99 typically approves their calendar for one year out in March. So we want to continue to work toward alignment with our high school district. We also need to collaborate with our associations for that. And then for one more year, our construction partners to ensure that the timing of the summer of '26 also allows adequate time for the Phase Three projects that are scheduled. Our ultimate goal is obviously to align with District 99, but we need to continue to work with our construction partners, especially in that last summer of construction because there's a lot of work that still needs to be done in that shorter window. For curriculum and instruction, our District PTA Council held its Annual Reflections Arts Program. The ceremony was on Tuesday, December 3rd at O'Neill. The PTA recognized over 100 student pieces during the event. Forty are advancing, are advancing to the DuPage East Regional for another round of judging. We're extremely proud of our students and grateful to our PTA for organizing this program and providing this opportunity to celebrate the fine arts. It was a really nice evening last Tuesday. Finance, there is no finance update because Todd Drefall, Michelle Kober will give that. We'll be discussing the draft capital policy and then also the National School Lunch Program for the elementary schools. So that will be coming up shortly. Charge of Technology, as part of the district's efforts to focus on student attendance, we've been working with school office staff to ensure we understand how absences are calculated based on the minutes of attendance, especially because we have early release days on Monday. As part of this process, we will update the attendance section of the District 58 Family Handbook. The changes include updates to how we report absences, the tardy-minute threshold, and the updated language reflecting how half and full-day absences are calculated. Families are always encouraged to review these updates and communicate 58. We talked at the last meeting not only the importance of attendance for school designations, but also it's important to have kids in school so they continue to learn and we don't see gaps in their knowledge. Student Services, mark your calendars. The Grove Children's Preschool is excited to invite prospective families to our open house at Henry Puffer. That will be on Wednesday, February 12th from 5:00 to 6:30. We encourage families to come and explore our award-winning program and discover what makes our preschool so special. Registration for the 2526 school year opens on Wednesday, February 19th. And we look forward to welcoming our new preschool families. For Public Relations, this is always a longer update because it's the holiday seasons. And we want to thank the Downers Grove community for their giving and supportive nature. Each year, many organizations and individuals provide our students in need with winter clothing, holiday gifts, holiday meals, and essential items. This year is no exception, and we're incredibly grateful for all the support we receive. This year, St. Joseph Knights of Columbus, the Downers Grove Mouslats, the District 58 Helping Hands, and Stitches to Share have donated winter coats, snow pants, snow boots, and winter accessories for students in need. The Downers Grove First United Methodist Church provided all elementary schools with $12, $25 Target gift cards to give to families who are in need. Emmanuel Lutheran Church provided 45 family Thanksgiving meals and will provide each additional 45 holiday meals as well. Later this month, the Roadrunner Soccer Club will provide holiday gifts for approximately 130 students. In addition, St. Joseph Catholic Church and EM5 Foundation will provide holiday gifts for a few families facing hardship. And as always, Blessings in a Backpack Program continues to provide weekend meals for District 58 families facing food insecurity. We are very, very grateful for the amount of support that all of our students receive. So we always want to ensure that no child goes hungry and the holidays are special for every child in our school district. And that wouldn't be possible without our community partners. So I'd like to thank them on behalf of the board and our entire school district for making sure that those goals are met. I can tell you, working in several school districts, that this is unique, that you get that level of community support. And it's something we certainly don't take for granted, but I know all of our families appreciate it very much. And I want to thank our families as well for donating to these organizations to make that happen for all of our students. The Education Foundation has been extremely busy and there are many great things to report out. First, the foundation recently awarded District 58 and 28 teacher grants totaling over $30,000. The grant topics cover a variety of topics, grade levels, and subjects, and we're very excited to see them in action. Second, the annual Grove Express 5K race took place on Thanksgiving morning. And we set a record this year with more than 6,700 registered runners. I was out there and it was a lot of fun, but boy, was it crowded. Proceeds from the Grove Express 5K support the Education Foundation, the Rotary Club of Downers Grove, and the Roadrunner Soccer Club and its own scholarship program. Event proceeds will be invested in the district, or excuse me, in the Downers Grove community through education and youth programs, including in District 58. Finally, the foundation is gearing up for its Harlem Wizards fundraiser and family fun event, which will take place on Martin Luther King Weekend on Sunday, January 19th from 6:00 to 8:00 at Downers Grove Self-High School. We will be sharing more information regarding this event and the community later this week. That's always a fun event as well. We're looking forward to that. That concludes the Superintendent's Update.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All right, that brings us to the monthly Business and Treasurers Report. Todd Drefall.
We have a few things this evening to kind of go through informational. First off, the year-to-date report. Things are going on as expected. We noted through the FAC meeting on Friday morning and went through that piece. There is, if you look at the expenditures and the cash balance, a differential between end of November this year and end of November last year. The district has 26 pay cycles. And this year, we had three in November, which is our normal cycle. Last year, that just happened to have three in December. So the differential is about $2.6 million, which is during school year, our, our pay at this point. So that's about the difference between those two. So you'll note those in the year-to-date report. Also, in the packet for information for the board is the capital policy. That was a conversation discussion at last month's board meeting. Again, the FAC gave input. We've adjusted the proposed draft after taking in and receiving that feedback from the board and from the FAC. That includes a minimum dollar amount to start with and growing by inflation. We've also then adjusted to the allowing for a transfer into the two funds, both capital and then Health, Life, Safety Fund, which are essentially capital funds for those type of expenses. If the board is accepting and willing, we would then propose to move this to first reading for the January board meeting with second reading for February and then for approval at that point. Certainly, given the structure and, and the feedback as the administration is working through budgeting and planning for fiscal year '26 and building the five-year model, we're already taking these pieces into account with making those adjustments and accordingly. So there's that piece. Registration fees, it's time to start. February starts registration for summer, for school year '25, '26. That means that we would want to give you an informational item this month and then ask for approval in January of the registration fees for that year. Those are in the packet. It goes by our, our format that we have established over the last several years. And that is to grow by inflation unless there's a specific item that it grows. and that is to grow by inflation unless there's a specific item that it grows by contractor increase. Or in some cases, have been kept flat because there's been no increase. The novel, I think, is still at $10, so I think that that one isn't changing. Or some of the other pieces haven't adjusted. So those are in there for informational for the board. The last item is for action that the board has seen now for the last couple of months and had conversation, and that would be the food service contract for vending food service for elementary lunches under the National School Lunch Program. As the contract structure established by the State Board to execute on the National Lunch Program, this allows the district to seek reimbursement for those meals, those free and reduced meals offered to the elementary schools and would be going forward. It has an annual savings for the district by allowing for that reimbursement and by the rate that we have established with the contract vendor, Open Kitchens, has an annual savings of almost $300,000. Obviously, this would go forward for the second half of this year, and then we would revisit and work through the contracting for the following year with the State Board and make a recommendation at a later point. With that, I will take any questions on any of those items.
Questions or comments?
Just some comments. Just want to express my appreciation for the changes that were made to the draft capital policy. One being the removal of the board may deem the transfer in a necessary. I think that's a huge piece of it. Kind of forces the board to be fiscally responsible. Two would be the indexing to inflation, because $750,000 in 20 years is not going to be able to buy what it can in 2024. And the third piece that you brought to the table that I really appreciate is the ability to split the money between Capital Projects Fund and the Life Safety Fund. And I like that a lot, because I don't know how and when we're going to have the conversations about how to divide that up. I know we have to do the 10-year survey coming up, but I think if we start thinking about how to save for life safety projects and not just reflexively go to our capacities to sell bonds exempt from DCEB under the new legislation, I think that gives us other... It invites greater planning and strategery around our planning for our future.
It's a dated reference.
And, you know, so therefore, you know, we're in many different ways we're planning for how to keep our buildings intact without having to resort to duct tape and prayers like we did five years ago. So thank you.
I concur with all of that. I also have a question on the lunch item, of course, which I'm sure you're expecting, because it is a consistent and constant question around fun lunch. So I'm sure you have some sort of answer prepared for that, because as a mother, you know how much we love not having to make lunch after the law went on Friday.
We have, yeah. And we believe this works out, and we anticipate and obviously have worked out that fun lunch can continue as it is, and we will make adjustments with the vendor and so forth on days that they do not need to serve, you know, a specific building because of that schedule and so forth. And then to that, and that's kind of, we've been working on that as well. So that's part of the whole overall package when we were putting it together.
May we all celebrate. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments?
Question about logistics on the, as we shift to National School Lunch, and then also don't offer the vendor lunch on days when fun lunch is happening in the building. Sometimes the menu for the fun lunch is great, and sometimes it's like not a thing that a kid is going to want. And that means that the backup plan for that kid will be.
We'll get it covered. It'll get covered. We'll make sure. If, and if there's an event where, you know, we still need to provide those lunches and so forth, we'll get those. We'll get those over to them. Yes.
And just for anyone listening in the community, we are not yet, because the serveries still have to be built in all of our elementary schools. So this continues the box lunch or bag format until the fall of '26, when we can shift over. When the middle school cap years are done, if we do the hub and spoke to the serveries in the elementary schools with a hot meal option. So this continues the status quo for that time period, but then the goal is to switch over to hot lunch for all in the fall of '26.
And one thing, since this is being video recorded, which is something I... The State Board staff has been very helpful in working through these things with us because of the uniqueness and the structure that we have and the timeframe with the format of getting, moving to and building and getting to a hot lunch program. That is sometimes not always, you know, said about, you know, their structure and what they are limited to do under state and under regulations and under national or federal law. But they've been really helpful with how to work through this and make, you know, make this work for us. And we're hoping that we don't have to put this out. We can continue this contract structure until the time when we're ready to go for a hot lunch program, which, in which case then it will be a full, all-out, total bid RFP structure at that point in time. So that, I add that for the posterity.
So then the next step for us is we'll ask the board to approve that. And if the board approves, I want to also thank Michelle Kovar for working behind the scenes. We need to get the final approval from the State Board of Education over the next two weeks, finalize the logistical plans with our elementary schools, which really won't be a significant departure from what we're currently doing. This is more in the back end for the reimbursement. And then, of course, over the next two weeks, implement our communication plan with all of our families, because this will start January 6th. But really, the only difference is who's providing those meals in this sense. We're very happy to report that our current food provider at the middle school, Quest, who's also been helping us out with the box lunches, is allowing families to still access their platform My Meals, so people can still order online, which is very, very helpful, not only to our families, but also to us in the district, because otherwise, we would have to set up a billing system and do all that on the back end at the district office. We're grateful that Quest as well are working through this with us.
Anybody else?
So one more thing I was just going to bring up. I know, I know this won't be a popular idea in some circles, but I get that. So, and I hesitate to bring it up, but I think it might help with our reporting here. We have 26 bi-weekly pays. And every year, we have a conversation around how that makes it harder to interpret our year-to-date reports. Just, I'll just throw the idea out there. I mean, I remember when I was a teacher, I loved those months when I got that extra paycheck. It was like, it was a huge bonus to me, but if it makes, it makes our payroll department run more smoothly, and it makes our documents that we present to the community a little bit more easier to understand, perhaps 24 bimonthly pays might be an easier route. And just throw that idea out there just for consideration. It's not something where it's going to get fixed tomorrow or even next year, but it's just my two cents.
And I think what we will do is, we will, we'll document better in that year-to-date report when we give an update and structure and explain how that piece is, you know, ahead of time. And I think that'll help kind of explain some of that too as well.
That's one of the conversations that Todd and I have been having behind the scenes. I think too, if you're getting that as board members or if you're getting that as the FAC and you're not sure that, oh, this is a month where there might be three pays versus two, it causes a lot of questions behind the scenes that could be alleviated by just simply noting on the start of the year-to-date reports when we get into the school year, this is the pay period that we have an extra one, or this is the one that is two.
Well, this one is also close together, though. November to December is not as big. When they're further apart.
So the three, it's either November or December is one of those cycles. And then it's May and then or June that can hit. I went back and looked. Last year was the only December in eight years that we had a three-pay in December. Otherwise, it's always been in November. So it just happened to be the last year was the anomaly, not, you know, this year, and that's how it looks. But we will certainly be able to kind of document that piece and add to that.
Yeah. And one of the things, just to clarify as well, in our teachers' contract, it does stipulate how we pay our teachers, and so that isn't just something that we could go and switch. But nevertheless, we can talk to all of our employee unions, but that would certainly be something that we would have to discuss during bargaining.
And then every so often, though, we also have a 27th payment in a year.
Right. Depending on, I think it's every nine or 10 years you get that. Interesting. But to clarify to anyone listening, there's no extra checks. It's the same amount. It's just how it gets divvied out each year. Money's always the same, whether you get paid once a month, twice a month.
You're not changing this year, Danny, less than 26 pays.
Thank you very much. All right. That moves us on to the committees. First up is the Policy Committee with Vice President Harris. You guys met on December 3rd.
Yep. So presented to the board this evening is the press update for, that we looked over on December 3rd at our meeting. We had a good meeting talking about this, these policies. The good news is there is nothing in there that was controversial, but we did take the time to go through each of the policies. Most of the updates are making us current with recent legislation that was passed in the state of Illinois or at the federal level. And then there's always some wordsmithing, continuous improvement around the language to make sure it's, you know, it's clear and it's, you know, it's accessible to the board and to communities. We always, you know, one of the first things we always think about is how is this going to affect our day-to-day operations as a district? Is this, any of these policy changes going to have a substantial impact on how we operate? And the answer for these is just generally speaking, no. But they are just things that in many cases codify what we're already doing or are just not consequential. So, Tracy, anything to add there?
It was our first one of the year, and so we had a reset with new members and did introductions and stuff. So I've been on this committee with you for two years now. And so I will say that being part of the Press Plus is one of the single greatest things I've ever seen. Because I used to be on it before I was even on the board, and I remember what a complete nightmare that was before, the way it was run. So I'm very, I'm very grateful that we have this in place to help guide us and be in line with every other district in the state of Illinois. So it makes these meetings a lot easier, in my opinion.
Agreed. I also think it helps our community when, although not every policy is the same, probably 95% of them are identical to what you'd see in District 99. So even though we're not a unit district, to have that same policy platform, K-12 is super helpful.
Yes. So thank you, Kevin, for bringing that on board.
So we're putting them on tonight's agenda for first reading, and we'll take action in January. But if anybody has any questions, you can answer them now.
All right. Then is there a motion to approve for first reading the draft policies from Press Issue 117 as presented?
Second.
All right. Melissa, please go roll.
Member Hannes?
Aye.
Member Harris?
Aye.
Member Weiner?
Aye.
Member Joshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye. The motion carried to approve for first reading the draft policies from Press Issue 117 as presented. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Legislative Committee has not met since the last board meeting, but the Financial Advisory Committee did. We met last Friday, December 6th. Don't have a lot to share with you, because you heard much of it in the financial report. But like you referenced, we did have a lot of new members. It was probably the biggest-attended FAC meeting I've seen in the last couple of years. And it seemed like a really incredible group of people, so I'm looking forward to working with them. However, when you have a new group, we did spend a lot of time talking about the year-to-date report and what those anomalies are, how you see there is a bit of a swing. A part of it was the three payrolls. Part of it is now the debt service payments that we're starting to make. So those things are going to start impacting the year-to-date report, just stuff, you know, to kind of keep in mind as we move forward. The, we talked about our fees as well. If you have any questions about those, happy to answer them. But basically, a few years ago, when we went to CPI, that's really kind of helped out. Some of them do remain flat or a specific fee for a specific thing that we sell that would align directly with that. And then the NSLP lunch, just, this is $1,500 a day for us. We're being reimbursed at, is it three cents?
Four cents.
Four cents?
Four cents.
Four cents, you know, and now, now we're getting over $4. So that is a, that is a huge weight lifted off of our.
Per meal. So we're mentioning.
Oh, yeah. No, that's per, yeah. Yeah, we were getting reimbursed, yeah. It was around $1,500 a day out of our pocket. And then the capital policy, which we've talked about already as well. Again, thanks to the board, because I think the policy that we ended up with is going to be really, really solid. We had a really nice conversation in the room of why $750,000? How did we get there? What does this mean? How are we loading it now? You know, we did have one very optimistic member in there going, what if we end up with way too much money in here? And we really appreciated his optimism. So, but other than that, it was pretty much in preparation for these meetings and I think most of the stuff you've been updated to. But the capital policy becoming later on down the line, as Mr. Dreifall mentioned. But on tonight's agenda are the food service piece will be on the agenda later on today. But that concludes my report. If you have any questions. Okay.
Maybe a question either for you or for Todd. We approved that capital policy. Will be the first budget cycle where it will be required for us to implement it.
Next, next year.
It'll be immediate.
Yeah, the following fiscal year is when it would go into effect. But that is, this budgeting component of it has been part of our five-year plan. In fact, we were intending on, without a policy, putting $750,000 into our capital fund this year. It was that abrupt, unexpected shift in funds from the state through CPPRT and the reimbursements that come out of the evidence-based funding that kind of threw us off. And we had to find a quick way to save money, because we had already obviously committed to a lot of things. Now that we're, we've sort of readjusted that, we're now set up for next year. But it also is a reminder to one of the reasons why we want to codify this as policy. It was the thing that immediately got sort of yanked is why we had, I believe, a six-to-one vote on our actual budget that came around, as Vice President Harris didn't support the idea of banning that policy. But yeah, so it would immediately go into effect. But is part of that five-year budget or the five-year financial plan that we have? Todd, did I miss anything? Anything else? All right. District leadership team has not met. Neither has the Health and Wellness Committee. Have you had a SACD report?
Yeah, for SACD, we continue in particular to look at our new billing model for SACD. We have a complete new way of doing things this year. And so whenever you implement a new billing model that's impacting all the member districts, we just want to make sure that it's being implemented the way it was intended. And then making sure that when you do get those hiccups in it, that we can iron those out. One of the things we're looking at in particular now is Medicaid reimbursement. Two things have happened. Our new billing model allows us to get money back off of tuition. And then also, the federal government is finally getting around to making sure that districts are able to recoup Medicaid expenses. So that is very encouraging. And so we want to make sure that when we do get that Medicaid reimbursement at the end of the year, and just to share with the board, you're looking at approximately $900,000 spread across the cooperative. Because we're one of the biggest members of the cooperative, we are looking at about $100,000. Again, these are very tentative numbers in tuition reduction for our students going to the cooperative. So that is a new savings to the district that we want to continue to work through. And we want to make sure that we're working with our special education directors at the district level that we're getting that right as superintendents and also with our business managers. So really taking a look at that. Starting to have broader conversations about strategic planning, making sure that we're serving all the students in the cooperative to the best of our ability. And then facilities planning as well with SACD. As I've shared with the board before, SACD's lease is ending at the end of next school year. And so SACD has to determine what the next steps are. And so one of the first things that we're doing as a SACD board is working with the cooperative's architect, Archon, on a facility study to see what we have available, not only in SACD. SACD does own a building southeast, and they're currently running the building on Ogden Avenue that serves for their transition headquarters for students that are 18 to 21. But that is a facility that they rent, and the lease is up. It's less than ideal to meet their needs. And so taking a look at the member districts to see what space would be available. SACD is going to continue operating in a hybrid fashion, where they own some of the spaces, but also then rent out from member districts, including District 58. So looking at the long-term facility plan for SACD. One of the things we really strive for in terms of the member districts, if you look at the map of SACD, we're spread out all throughout DuPage County. We have everywhere from Keenaville way up to the north, several districts in western DuPage, and then a big chunk of districts in southeast DuPage. So looking at how can we centralize for our families to the greatest extent possible. We're very cognizant of students with special needs having to sit on buses for too long. And so really trying to identify spaces in our member districts that are available for SACD. The tricky part with that is many of the member districts, including ours, can come up with a space or two. But in order, they're looking for spaces for their programs, you know, where they might need five or six classrooms. And so how do we work with them and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students? So very positive conversations and things are moving in a good direction.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All right, that brings us on to the discussion portion of the night. Now, as this board knows, I will not typically put a discussion item on the agenda that we would be voting, when we're discussing something, we're also voting on in the same meeting. However, I know everybody's got a chance to look at the bids. We've seen them. We did want to invite our owners' representatives back out tonight prior to taking action later on the agenda, since we walked away out of last meeting with a significant number of questions. But I, but to keep on target, we still have the actions on later on in the agenda. So I would like to welcome up our owners' representative to talk about the referendum projects and the bids that have come in.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Jordan Schultz from Huff &amp; Keel and the Forge Team. And again, somewhat typical update for this month, but obviously the primary focal point is to follow up from last month. All right. I'm not going to spend too long on photos of the project updates. Again, hopefully you've journeyed by both middle schools and have seen the significant progress. But again, the, the progress for Herrick is shown here. So we have some of the in-wall rough for the kitchen area is shown. We have obviously a storm shelter in the upper left. And then the new admin and front entrance in the lower left. And then the library in the upper, in the lower right. So it's exciting to see things come together. Again, I'll show milestones in a moment here, but getting into the winter season here, obviously getting pretty frigid weather. It's important to get dried in and to get temporary heat in those spaces and that's coming along nicely.
You know what day you took that picture at Herrick?
I know, right?
That was a timestamped in my brain.
This snow is going like this.
Yeah. Sorry.
Very pleasant, very pleasant. More to come, right? That's how these things go in the winter. And then here's some photos of O'Neill. Again, beautiful sunny day on this one in the upper left, gym, storm shelter. In the upper right, again, with O'Neill, we have some interior renovations, if you can picture that northeast corner. So those classrooms will be turned over here right now, basically, next couple of weeks. Punches is occurring. In the lower left, the administrative entrance. And then in the lower right is the interface, basically the roofing system that joins the storm shelter and the fitness. Picture-wise, again, for the middle schools, the construction is about 50% complete to date. And then these are a few milestones that we had mentioned last time. Again, just to highlight, great progress on this front because what happens is when you get weather tight, you can temporarily heat it. That's when you can start the finishes and such. And that's a huge factor for getting through the winter without delays. Specific to O'Neill, again, they're doing some masonry there right now, finishing that up. And then working on punches on the interior, like I mentioned. And then doing the framing and the mechanical roughens. And actually, the glass curtain wall is going in, which is exciting. On O'Neill, similarly fashioned, so MEP roughens are occurring. There's painting in the gym that is beginning now. And then there's glass going into the front entrance. With the kitchen additions, some rooftop units are going on and being installed and connected right now. And inspections are occurring on those. And then, what else? Framing, there's framing occurring inside in tandem with the MEP roughens. Chiller steel will be installed and complete still this month, which is great. And that'll be good progress for Herrick. As for some of the soft side of things, furniture equipment, we do need to take action on furniture being ordered. We'll talk about that in a couple of slides. And then just a quick note at the bottom, additions are on track for this next summer and finishing up. Bullion Andrews is here to hold accountable for that duration. And then the interiors will occur again a year from now and wrap up, just like that O'Neill one's wrapping up for second semester. The interior renovations will wrap up next fall. For furniture, Jennifer's here. Don't need her to step up here unless you have specific questions later in the presentation. But again, they've conducted a lot of user group meetings to vet what type of furniture is needed. What are they going to, what's going to be best for the learning environments? What's going to be best for the staff, et cetera? So a lot of coordination, not only with the stakeholders, but also with Hendrickson and the design team from White to nail down what are going to be the best amenities for, for the classrooms going forward, libraries, cafeterias, et cetera. So the total sum right now, I don't have glasses on right now, but $844,000 is the toll for this phase. And what we try to do in this graph is just to differentiate and say, look, here's what has been approved to date. Here's what we're asking for at this time. And then what are the funds remaining in that remaining funds column to cover that last column of the identified scope? So as you can see importantly, the 1.2 of remaining is about in line with the 1.1 of estimated remaining scope. Again, these are, this is scope that hasn't been nailed down, or I should say it the other way. Scope that has been nailed down, but specific pieces of that furniture hasn't been nailed down. So that'll occur with more user group meetings. Any questions right there? Okay. We'll turn our attention to the budget. So first at a high level, and again, I'll go into this about two slides and then stop for any questions at that time. So 42% overall completion with the referendum work. And as of today, with the award of these secondary, second phase of the elementary schools, 91% of the funds will be committed, which again, getting to that point obviously is a big deal. Because then all that really remains is, again, there's some soft cost side, like the furniture that has to be finished, some of the technology and equipment, and then of course, the Phase 3 schools in 2026. In terms of construction contingency, you see a few numbers here. Again, O'Neill and Herrick continue to bounce themselves out to a degree. And we'll just continue to watch that closely because the goal here, again, aside from the big Herrick issue that we addressed last summer, we just don't want to see having to dip into owner contingency if at all possible. And we're on track for that at this time. Quick note again, elementary school Phase 1, still nailing down the final costs for that one. And, and that sum of savings is going to be in the $50,000 to $100,000 range. Okay. So bidding update. Again, wanted to show this graphically once again. So the current package that is shown here at $30.9 million. We had showed last month $2.3 million higher than this. This is what we've brought it down to through the efforts that we'll talk about momentarily. Lastly, the diagonal hatch in that last column is our projection. Again, can't read the future, but we had talked about last time, we'll talk about it again tonight. We want to carry forward a projection of, hey, if there's an overage at that time, we want to be well-prepared for that because that's been our experience in the first two phases with the, with the bidding. Okay, so I'm going to go through this slide and the first bullet point and then I'll pause for questions. So with big group number two, again, big group number one occurred already and was awarded for the equipment, the long lead equipment. With big group two, White had a big problem, quite the issue to tackle as a team. Why did we get here and how do we get ahead? So I want to talk about that a little bit more. Number one, factors and causes, right? So I think coming out of Phase 1, there was some overconfidence as O'Neill and Herrick had bid really well. So it, it deflated our need, right? Or I should say it the other way, right? The savings on that offset the overage on the elementary schools Phase 1, right? This time, we didn't have that. And so we had one data point last summer or last March when we awarded those bids. Not enough to say, are we going to be over on the next phase of the elementary schools? But again, I think some overconfidence coming into this round and a little bit, not enough of a cautionary approach to say, wow, we're, we're off on that first one. We might have to take caution for the second. Secondly, B, assuming that the earlier bidding, again, bidding here in early fall rather than late fall. You know, subcontractors don't have their pipeline filled up for next summer yet for the summer slams. And so we said, great, you know, Bullion Andrews said, look, we're going to have some great coverage. It's going to be competitive. And indeed it was. The coverage on these scopes, if you look through the detail, six, seven, eight, nine, sometimes up to eight bidders on a particular piece of scope, which is fantastic, right? These are tricky projects. You're putting a lot of work into place in a very short amount of time. But to see that amount of coverage is really positive. So that part was good. The part that didn't result was driving the price down from where Bullion Andrews had said, hey, we're going to expect some savings here. See, this was, we reduced the design and escalation contingency too early, right? So as we're going through, we've talked about the various buckets of contingency. So there's estimating and basically escalation slash estimating contingency, design contingency. Those are the early ones that basically get, go down to zero once you award the scopes of work. Then you have the owner contingency and you have the construction contingency. Those first two, the estimating or escalation contingency and design contingency, Bullion Andrews said, hey, we're not going to make that budget without taking those funds and allocating them. We're confident of those numbers going into the bidding. So at DD, from the transition from construction development drawings to bidding, we said, okay, great. We can leave those or move those toward the, what we expect the bids to come in at. And that wasn't prudent to do at the time, looking back, right? We should have taken a more conservative, a more cautionary approach than, than that. D, again, I would say the progression of drawings from the SD level, which is schematic, through design development and into the construction documents just didn't keep pace. Again, it's a human, it's a human element. It's a human effort, right? Bullion Andrews reaches out to their contractor market and says, hey, electrical sub, what do you see on these drawings that is going to be in line with the pricing for Phase 1? And what do you see just at face value, right? Same with the mechanical trades, same with plumbing. Those are the big ones. In-house, they usually will do some of this finishes, right? Painting, drywall, flooring, et cetera. So they did that due diligence, but it was insufficient to actually get us the right numbers, right? Any number of fingers can be pointed in that regard, right? Did the subcontractors give bad numbers? Did Bullion Andrews estimators, you know, not get into the weeds far enough to get us the numbers that were more appropriate? We really can't pull the curtain back on past, the past, right? But suffice it to say, we were obviously low and very disappointed by that. Several of the data points here that were the biggest, drywall significantly over budget by $500,000 overall between the four schools. HVAC, 1.5 over the prior budget. And then electric, 3.4 over the prior budget. And the interesting thing is to compare that to Phase 1, right? On a dollar per square foot basis, what are the ages of the schools? Phase 2 schools are slightly older on average, about 10 years older on average. So, okay, well, maybe there's something to be said there. I should say, no, slightly newer. Okay, we're going to, we're going to do better. The Phase 2 schools are about 10 years on average, newer than the Phase 1 schools. Okay, it's a mark in the right direction. Well, it turned out not to be any less expensive and actually trying to be more expensive on both electrical and mechanical side. So $5 per square foot for HVAC, $17 a square foot for electrical. And again, as you get into it, they're just electrical panels, right? It's lighting. And when you look at the floor plans and you say, okay, are we replacing significantly more areas? There is some of that, absolutely. There are more areas, more libraries in Phase 2 than you have in Phase 1. So there are larger areas of ceiling tile that are going to get replaced and lighting with that ceiling tile that gets replaced. And some of those are the drivers for those cost increases, but it doesn't account for all of it. Item E then, and I'll take questions. So scope growth was not, was also not kept in check during design and during construction of Phase 1. So again, as you're in the old schools, you're saying, okay, here's what we had to do with Phase 1 to kind of address existing conditions. So one of those, for example, would be above ceilings and making sure that there's smoke and fire partitions above ceilings, dividing the hallway, the corridors from the classrooms, right? Okay, and that comes back to the 10-year surveys, right? We have to address that in Phase 1. So theoretically, that being incorporated to the drawings now will allow us to not burn that contingency money during construction. So it's already baked in for some parts of it, but it also makes it more, it also inflates the number from where we would have otherwise been, like Phase 1. And there are a number of items like that, which again, you can call it scope creep, you can call it caution, you can call it whatever. But suffice it to say, the drawings for Phase 2 are better, if you will. They're more thorough. But they also have added scope where it's like, hey, we need to peel some of that back. And that was why we entered into the value engineering effort collectively as a team to ensure that, look, as that scope expands with a lot of nice-to-haves, we need to keep our eye on the ball and ensure that we're covering the referendum promises. We're keeping equity with Phase 1, but then we need to keep it there. We can't allow it to balloon larger than that. I'm going to pause there for a moment. Questions at that juncture? And then I'll talk, and I'll talk a little bit more about how we approached the value engineering and cost management.
Questions, Ken, that's from the board?
So a couple, a couple throughout. So starting point on, you know, the vast difference in cost expectation or VBE, right? The job is to know the market. Why didn't we know the market?
Again, I think there's a deficiency on keeping pulse in the market, right? I do think that was the case. And again, whether it is bad information coming from trusted subcontractors, whether it's that plus the estimators not keeping pace with the drawing development, a combination of those things was then multiplied, I would say, by some of these things that we felt overconfident by, we collectively as a team, right? Bullion Andrews leading this effort. Hey, we're feeling great. We're bidding early. Hey, we're feeling great. These schools are a little bit newer. Hey, we're feeling great. We have great information coming out of Phase 1 into Phase 2. This is going to go really smoothly, right? But in reality, the costs were higher than Phase 1 significantly. And so again, I think those assumptions combined with the bad information coming into the numbers or coming into the estimates created a bad storm. All in all, again, we would expect to see bids be somewhere between 10 under, 10% under or 10% over, right? So to be at 15%, we're like, this is, this is a bad day. And I'm sure you all felt that in your gut, right? You're like, this is like a gut punch, right? It's extremely disappointing to be there. It's not unheard of. It happens. One of the other things honestly is that every year, we're kind of like, we're past COVID pricing. We're past COVID pricing. We're past COVID pricing, right? And so again, every year we think, oh, things are getting better, things are leveling out and/or coming down. And they haven't, we haven't seen that as much as we'd like to, I think. And that's again, sort of a tertiary issue, but it's certainly a contributor.
Well, sure, but I mean, the job is to know the market, know what the reality is, not assumption of reality, right? The actual reality of the market in construction. It could go, steel can be really expensive one day and wood can be really expensive the next day. And it can change within a quarter, within a week, within a month. And so the fact that there wasn't a pulse on that is extraordinarily disappointing from my perspective.
I would agree.
So, you know, I don't like being a case study. Being a case study.
Agreed.
And this is a really disappointing, the number actually prior to value-based engineering was about 19% over. Not 15% or 14% over. It was about 19% higher than expectation. So it was more than that of a disappointment to me because we're looking at almost a 20% over budget from our original expectation. And then having to go into VBE in order to meet even a 14 or 15% over budget. And now we're projecting Phase 3 based off of a VBE not based off of what actually the overage was.
Right. Well, and one of the things we had to parse out just when we're talking percentages is we have to add in the budgets for the three added scopes, right? Servories, cabling and the interior doors. And so that's part of that adjustment when we look at Phase 3, and we'll, we'll talk about that in a moment. But 100% agree with you and that's why we've taken this cautionary tale. It's like, okay, we had one data point. And as I warned, I think in October board meeting, I just, we caught, went out of that saying, hey, we didn't know what the results were, right? At that time, I just said, look, we don't know where we're going to be. And I threw out that number, it could be $3 million over like Phase 1 was. Well, it was way worse than that. But one data point from Phase 1 wasn't sufficient for me to say, look, I'm going to challenge Bullion and say, guys, you're, right? Now we have two data points and there's no way in hell that we're going to let Phase 3 sit as it is.
I expect a lot more challenging.
Absolutely.
Coverage here. Because this was a shock. And exactly the situation in the October board meeting and the prior board meetings where we were voting on contingencies and adding scope that I brought up in the meeting and said that that was my concern. And now here we sit in exactly the scenario and even worse of a scenario than I had expected at that time. Because I know, and I'm not even in construction at the trades change. You all are the professionals and should have known and should have allowed us to reasonably rely on that. And that's really disappointing.
I would agree. 100% agree.
Yeah, could you? That's incorrect because I have a seven point, I have a prior to VB of about 7.6 million.
Yeah, I can go to
So we did 2.4 million in savings. And then you have a, go ahead.
If we go to the next budget, the 32977596, that's the original budget that we had published. That number does not account for the server infrastructure, the additional doors and the additional re-cable. So when you actually add that into that number, which was scope added from contingency, that should be 34021766. So that's where that 15% of where we actually came into budget So that's where that 15% of where we actually came into budget for where we're at now. If you can understand.
Those dollars, didn't you reduce some of those in the VBE, in the value-based engineering? So help me understand these numbers, because maybe they're just not written out in a way that is clear and concise. The, the under-over budget number of 4.6 that I'm looking at.
Correct.
I'm informed that this is the number post-value-based engineering.
Correct.
And that we saved 2.4 million in value-based engineering.
Correct.
If I add those two numbers together, I have about $7 million.
Correct. And, but, but that number, the 32977596 in the original budget, that was Bullion Andrews' original budget prior to any ad alternates being accepted by the board, which is server infrastructure, replacement of doors and recabling. So prior to us going out to bid, there was roughly, it was exactly. Yeah, there was 1, 1,44,197 added to the scope prior to going out to bid. So all I'm getting at is that 14% that you see right now, it's actually 10.5% when you are actually comparing the original budget plus the added scope to where we're at today.
So that added amount, though, didn't that come out of owner contingency?
It did, but you are not seeing this, there should have been. If there's an original scope, there probably should have been an adjusted scope, which was additional scope added by the board. And then current budget prior to going out to bid.
When, when it says original budget, that means totally original budget, we just don't.
Correct. But that's what you're, isn't that what, this line across is basing that 14% off of the original budget to the new budget, to the projected cost, to the under-over.
Correct.
It's not taking into account owner contingency, but that's okay. I'm not gonna get too granular on the numbers.
I think we can follow up for how, for the exact percentages of where we're actually falling to, I'll call it an adjusted budget, which includes the additional scope.
An adjusted budget in between the original budget and the projected, that's where you would see that 1,005 move up from owner contingency up to that 32, 33 million.
And that would adjust that 14 down to 10 and a half.
Correct.
Except it's still money out of our contingency.
Right, but that's, that's a project that we decided on, not, not an overage that came because of bidding.
Correct.
Right, yeah. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure I, I'm talking it out, because I want to make sure. I just wanna, you know, when we're comparing apples to apples, I want to make sure that the numbers are correct. And exactly what you just said, Darren, is, is correct.
So then this next line item, the 15 to 17 to 2.28 for phase three, because this is where my real concern is, is that we're gonna get to phase three, we're going to be over budget, and we're going to have to come up with the money to figure out what to do in phase three. So these numbers, do they include or exclude the servories?
It includes that. And again, this is a little bit of the weirdness of it, is that this includes infrastructure for phase one and three. Because that's just how it's happened, right? In sequencing, you said, look, we're, we didn't have time to get phase one infrastructure into, you know, this past stuff. It's getting added into when we do 2026 work, that's when that work is occurring. So we have cabling, server, interior doors, and on top of that, 1,005 as the cautionary tail. So we're pre-adding that to say, look, we're gonna be in this launch route than where it began at 15.
Come to this next year and you come to me with 20%, I'm going to be really upset. I'm just letting you know now.
Completely understand.
I feel like a prophecy, I don't want to be a prophet, I would rather not know, I would rather it not be true. But if this comes to next year and we're at 20%, I'm gonna point back to this meeting.
Completely agree. And, and Jordan will talk through the steps. I will say that 15919789, you'll see the projected cost right now at 14479890. And that number includes 785,101 of added scope by the board and 1.5 million of projected overages based on our historical bidding of phase one and phase two elementary schools.
Let's be clear, the added scope was on reliance of information that we were told we were confident.
Correct, I'm, I'm just trying to get.
No, I know, I just.
The frustration is warranted.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely agree.
Clear, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So, let me move backwards. So again, sort of following that line of thought, again, as we talk about how we approach phase two, right? So obviously talked briefly last time about cost options, value engineering. And Board Member Ellis brought it up, you know, again, value engineering, you're driving toward a value to say, look, here are the dollars we need to spend, how do we hold the tension of, we will not let go of the referendum goals, we will not let go of equity, but we need to adjust the scope and adjust any particular details of that scope so that we can meet the budget. And that same exercise we'll talk about in a moment will occur for phase three. So the more rigorous budgeting that will occur during phase three is gonna be, look, are we there every week, right? Are we there, are we there? So design has now started, last several weeks. We'll have our, I think, gives it a second or third design meeting this Thursday. And again, that's gonna be the exercises. Okay, now, as we're driving forward, we not only take the lessons learned from phase one and phase two, we're also talking more, in a more detailed fashion about the budgets, so that we're driving toward that value and will not see anything beyond what we're showing here. Again, as I mentioned, super important, obviously, for the community at large, commitment to equity and referendum goals. And then again, critically assessing field decisions. So as we're going through phase one, those construction contingency dollars got spent because of a number of different things that needed to be done. But are there, is there a more rigorous path? Absolutely. So when we sit down with the team every week and there are field decisions being made on walks, et cetera, again, our goal would be to not spend and expend all of those construction contingency dollars through those three months next summer. And then I put a little timeline on there just of, in terms of what the team has done over the last two months since bids came in in mid-October. So for phase three, again, appreciate the, the lead in here. We've projected 1.5 million set aside. Again, this is, I think, a wise, prudent, cautionary approach based on the two data points we've got to date. This is in addition to the added funds, as we said, for interior doors, cabling and server infrastructure, inclusive of server infrastructure for phase one schools. We are committed to maintaining consistency with phase one and to design. And like I said, we'll be holding budget alignment meetings regularly to ensure that the white team, the Bully team, our team, the district are all on the same page with where we're headed. And then as we get into construction itself, obviously, contingency being monitored very tightly. Item number four here then, again, just to get back to the middle schools, because obviously this is all one big project, all 13 schools together. So in terms of a few data points, right? 50% complete, a lot less risk going forward. Granted, there are some interior concerns, absolutely, for some of the older infrastructure, but we're not coming out of the dirt, right? Put, to put it bluntly. So again, there's less concern than coming out of the dirt. And, and so we will hit the infrastructure head-on, particularly at Herrick. When you get into some of those, the bones of the building in these interior renovations, there will be some messy things to discover there. But it's not orders of magnitude escalation from what you see and when you're coming out of the ground. Summer 2025's work is substantial, but again, it's already being planned for now. And we have a longer runway to get the subs all teed up. Bullion Andrews has a longer runway to get them teed up and ready. And then lastly, OMS and HMS continues to, continue to roughly balance one another. And we'll continue to track that in real time with the construction team. So again, we, we flashed this up a moment later, earlier. I did put that highlight at the bottom. Again, these highlighted values include both the bid overage and the added scope for servories. And this is a concern, and we just want to make sure that, and if we need to have any follow-up in terms of better documentation or a different way of documenting the differences between original versus projected. Again, we have these internal conversations with our, the whole project team of how do we best convey what has transpired? So I'll go into the next sheet because it'll show it in a slightly different fashion. So again, we've got the allocated column and then the projected. And so with this conversation today, again, as the $50,000 to $100,000 of CM contingency savings from phase one gets solidified, that will slide over to the allocated. Again, right now, it's trending toward the $100,000 mark. And then the phase two overage, less the cost savings from the cost log, would also slide over. And that way, we'd end that exercise, having allocated all three components of servories, cabling and interior doors into the overall budget spreadsheet that we just left. Any questions there? Clear as mud. I'm happy to walk through this in detail, it's, I realize it's a lot of numbers, so it's.
I do have a question.
I was just gonna ask the, is the right read here then the, is it the 890, 740? Or the 5.8 million contingency that will be left after these are awarded? What's the remaining?
Yeah, let me just go to this one here. This is, again, this is the way my brain thinks and went over these slides with Dr. Russell last week, but we all thinking, it's like, all right, what's better? You know, right? What I'm trying to convey on this one is, right now, you've still, you haven't quote-unquote allocated the 1.5 of overage, nor spent the server and cabling and doors for phase two. So technically, you're still at 3.3 million as on this slide. Assuming we're standing here a year from now, we're at 890.
So we'd be going into summer 2026, we'd be going into three, four, five, still finishing up, so five schools remaining with 890. The middle schools won't quite be done, oh, no, they're gonna be done in quarter two.
Exactly. Yeah, so that's why I put this, this, I don't have a laser.
But realistically, we're actually, I mean, we're actually at 890 now, realistically.
Exactly, and that's why I wanted to show it, yep.
Yeah, I would say, where's our comfort level with going through 2025 through the end of project with an owner's contingency of under $1 million? I'm not comfortable. So I'd like to know how you feel about that, because I want to know where the money's coming from if that owner contingency does not have what it needs. So what do we do? This makes me very uncomfortable.
And, and that's, so the way I put it on here with that orange box around the percentages is just to say, look, for work in place, if we're at $1 million on a $200 million project, it feels terrible. But having 50% of the work in place, we are really showing, we're at 3% of contingency, assuming that we have, if we had to pull the plug on the phase one and phase three infrastructure, again, if, again, don't like to say those things out loud, right? But I said it last, you know, two meetings ago, it was like, if it was $3 million over, right? What are the rip cores that you could potentially pull if everything really went sideways, right? Well, do you have to do the cabling?
That was my question in October.
Do we have to do the cabling, right? Do we have to do the servories, right? Yes, right? But.
Which makes sense.
Right, absolutely. So, and that's why I'm showing, look, 3.3 million on our existing out, outstanding work in place or outstanding work yet, not yet in place, is 3%. And then a year from now, when we're sitting here, by that time, if we haven't spent a dime of that 890, then we'll still be at 6%.
Right.
Of work not yet in place. So again, it's.
Somewhat a pipe dream to not spend any of that.
It is a pipe dream.
That was kind of my second lead-in question was this scope growth issue that we had in phase one, right? I'm assuming some of that scope growth came out in value-based engineering work, right? So how much of that scope growth was a result of things that needed to happen? And how much of that scope growth was things that made sense to happen given the condition? So how much am I looking at when we talk about capital investment, future state, right? We're putting on future boards to repair. I want to make sure that we're ready for that and that we understand that. This is why that capital plan is so great, because it does set up the future state. But the future state's future, we're working on that. We want to do that. So I just want to understand how much of that scope growth that happened in phase one, are we deferring out?
Yeah, yeah, there's not a clean, cut, cut and clean answer. I mean, it would be things like.
You can answer it another day.
Some mason, yeah, so we could, we can go through that log.
You can go back to the desk.
Go, go to the drawing board.
Not really relevant to the vote today, because we kind of have no.
But it's, you know, again, if, if you're thinking, right, great, we're in the space, we need to take care of as much as possible of the 10-year things. We know that's coming up, right? Let's take care of as much of that as possible, right? That needs to stay in the scope. Things like some masonry restoration. Do we need to do all of the masonry restoration for the entire 360 of the building? Or what areas are the worst, right? Roof repairs, right? Things like that, flooring replacement, right? What are some of the areas that absolutely have to be done because it was promised and agreed upon and it maintains equity? And what can we simply kick down the road to become an issue five years down the road, 10 years down the road? So you asked the first question, give me two seconds.
It's okay. I'm asking a lot of questions, I'm sorry, but I want it all out here.
Very warranted, right? We're in, you know, this is the crux of it. But to answer your other question about contingency and work in place, right? So again, if we are, we have not yet spent any owner contingency aside from the Herrick soils.
Correct.
And there was a little projector thing, but that was again, an ad, right? A wished-for ad. So we're 50% complete on the middle schools, 100% complete on the elementary schools phase two. And so to finish phase one.
I would wish.
Yeah, I wish, right?
I bet you wish, everybody wishes.
Feel a lot better. But again, taking as many data points as possible, those are two, very, three very strong data points. O'Neill, 50%, Herrick, 50%, phase one elementary schools, 100%. And haven't touched owner contingency with those four data points or three data points, right? That says our 890 isn't safe, right? It's never safe till we're done two years from now. But it sure makes me feel a lot better that we don't have two different data points in different locations, right?
You know, the other, the other thing too, in terms of capital policy, and this is for insurance, right? Two years ago, we put 1 million into our capital. Last year, 500,000. This year, we didn't put anything, next year, 750,000. So if break glass for emergency, that is there. By adding in already the assumption of the 15% overage, right? That 890 is what's left after that insurance policy for the 15%. I, I'm with you, Melissa. You know, I, I stay up at night and many more gray hairs of all this, but we don't intend to spend that capital policy money on any of these things that we can't do, but that is still there in the event. We have to make sure that we maintain equity and get all the referendum promises in there as well.
But don't, don't want anybody rely on that.
No, cover your ears. And, and that's the other thing too, is when, when we are bidding phase three, you know, making sure that those value engineering savings from phase two continue into phase three. I think that is so very important.
So there are two particular increases I want to ask about. Since you're our owner's representative and you're doing a great job, I appreciate it. It's much better conversation than last time, so I really appreciate it. I do come with questions, because it's my job. So I noticed in the value-based engineering re-numbers, right? General trades bid went up about $280,000. Can you help me understand? I understand an overall cost savings is great, but I'd like to understand why the general trades went up so much.
I will be honest, I've analyzed that and I thought that it had come down, or it was, it was lower than, give me a second.
Lower than the other bidder.
It's lower than the next bidder, and I think the overall also had come down.
That is accepting an ad alternate for the door replacements at the four elementary schools that are part of phase two. So we, we bid that as an ad alternate, because it was a board request that we add that into the scope. We just wanted to keep it as a tracking mechanism of dollar values. So that's showing that into that as an accepted ad alternate.
It wasn't in the original bid opening.
Correct.
It was an ad alternate.
Correct.
The other bidder, was it awesome, an ad alternate for them?
Yep.
Where you have to, you have to include that ad alternate number.
Understand.
In your original bid, so it has to be competitive. So I think the.
Yeah, there's an ad.
The one where you guys had, where you guys had a competitor on it, you were.
There, there was still overall, that, because the other bidder didn't bid on two of the schools. Overall, we're still in a good position. But I know people look at numbers, I look at numbers.
Absolutely.
If I look at numbers, other people are looking at numbers. So my curiosity was what that was. So that is the. So that is the general trades cost for the addition of.
Correct. In the general trades, it includes scope for removal, replacement of those doors that were not originally in the base bid. So doors, frames and hardware is in that, the frame, the rough carpet degree to remove them, to replace them is in that general trade scope.
And that's in our, the budget documents that we have up above? That's included?
Correct.
Yeah, so it would not be in that original budget column, but it would be in the adder.
Numbers moving around.
And we did take a look. So again, I think we've developed a good working relationship, but we always double check that, you know, there's Bullion Andrews Masonry, Bullion Andrews bidding on general trade, right? So we're keeping a very close eye on those things of, do we get bid coverage, where those numbers come in at, et cetera. Again, we gotta keep these guys honest, and same with their overheads, frankly, right? They're super tense. I mean, all the, below the line, the low-the-line items, those numbers add up, right?
Sure.
So we gotta keep it tight, again, a tight eye on that, and that goes back to day one.
Why wouldn't it make sense to do the doors and hardware as a separate bid?
Sometimes we do see that, right?
A lot.
You'll bid out just the material itself, not the install, but you're gonna have carpenters install it. So if you're bidding for all the other doors and hardware, any of the trip package, et cetera, the lower install, yours can lump it all together. We have this wrestle on all our projects in this same conversation because we, you know, love to hate general trades, to be honest, right? Get a lot of the general contractor or the CM to have control of the job and pace of the job, especially with the summer slam. So on that side, we want them to have that scope. And then on the, on the cost side, we're like, we just need it to be, to be competitive so that we, we're not being gouged on it.
Well, right. My preference is though for doors and hardware, because they are so highly inspected, that it be a particular type of organization that does that work.
Yeah, so it.
So, you know, that particular one, you know, is important because that, those costs, if not done by someone who is certified and capable of doing that, can go way up. So they have the requisite certifications, et cetera, for install that we need. Good. Since that's the increase, only because it's tied to that particular thing.
Definitely.
I'm asking a question. Second question on increasing costs is I know design and engineering is tied as a set percentage, right? Some of the mistakes here are design and engineering mistakes. I'm uncomfortable with a million dollar over budget and no reduction in that fixed cost as a result of mistakes made. So I encourage a look at the possibility to reduce that cost. I don't think that we should be paying a million dollars in, in that. I, I know that it's a fixed fee, but I encourage, hey, look at that in a representation to say there should be something there.
And we did have that conversation because we felt the same way, you know, with any contracts that are tied as a percentage.
Yup.
We always are, right? It's brokerage-type setup, if you will. And so you're always watching what, if this balloons, that also balloons, right?
Correct.
And so we said, hey, timeout, what do you guys think? And so, Dr. Russell, we collectively had a conversation with White about that. And they did fix their fee for phase two schools so that it would not reflect the overage, which resulted in substantial dollars.
It did. That's good.
Approximately four hundred thousand dollars.
That's good. That's a good savings.
So we very much are aligned with.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, that was right.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I will say Bullion Andrews as well has also kept our, Freddie on our original.
Appreciate that too.
To assist with the overall budget.
Yeah, we do, we absolutely appreciate that. You know, it still doesn't do the full job for me, but I, I understand and I just really hope everyone's really cautious and careful with phase three because PS phase three schools is. My neighborhood. So I'm gonna be on it and I'm gonna be getting a lot of questions by my neighborhoods. So I'm gonna have to be able to answer if phase three winds up getting anything that does phase two and one does not. And I'm saying for phase two, I want phase two to have just as much as phase one had. I told you at the beginning, when I vote for something, I'm voting for all our schools, not just for one package of schools, which everybody is aligned, so appreciate that. Sorry for all of the questions. Sorry, everybody.
No, we, we actually really appreciate it. You know, these dialogues are important. I mean, we had a call as we were putting this package together and I, I mean, this is kind of what I, I warned you of, like, be prepared to come down.
There's one person who.
No, but not even one person, but the, the dialogue that we needed to have, this really needed to be had in, in public, right? We need to really talk about it. And especially, you know, we need to start to build a, a sense of comfort as we get prepared to go out for bid, you know, for phase three and those bids as well. You know, as, as the conversations continue, like, what can we do, you know, do we need to be even earlier? Or do we need to do additional design work upfront? Whatever it is that, you know, to make us as prepared for that process as possible is, is hard. Because in one way, it's really, really scary as we watch those numbers go down, right, the, the dollar amount left. Also, though, we were looking at our, the spend and the size go down, so you, you, like, I'm like, yeah. So sometimes I start to get comfortable for a minute and then I look at it again and then I start to panic again. It's, it's kind of a roller coaster, right? So I, I think more than anything else, I think we gotta continue to have the dialogue. I mean, the presentation that we went over here today, I think is beginning to instill some level of confidence in, in the oversight that's going on and the, and the understanding that I don't think any of us felt a few weeks ago, sitting in this room. And the value engineering part of it, there, you know, I think that there was this fear that it was going to be, how do we cut corners? You know, is this something, and is this something that now has thirty years of life in, in phase one schools, but has ten years of life in, in phase two schools? And I think the conversations that we had in preparation for this meeting, I, I get the impression that that's not the case, that you feel like there is strong equity. So I, I guess here I just wanna confirm that, you know, as well.
Quality has to be maintained. I mean, we can't just put a cheap product and say, oh, great, we put, you know, some paint on it and we're gonna walk away.
Right.
I guess I would, you guys can speak yourself.
Yeah, I mean, it was really making sure that the goals of the district-wide referendum, you know, from when it was voted on were maintained, making sure that there was equity amongst all the phases. What we've already put in place on phase one and work completed to date in the middle schools remains in this next upcoming summer of twenty five. I don't, we, we kept that in mind exactly when we're preventing, presenting cost-saving measures to not impact any of the equity amongst the schools, any quality amongst the schools, and making sure that the overall referendum goals were maintained, even while accepting these, these cost savings.
And I think not only is that what the board needs to hear, I think that's what our community at large really needs to hear, that we're going into all these with a, with a sense of fairness to what we're delivering and we're not gonna scramble at the last minute. In phase three, it's like, alright, you know what? They're fine, you know, let, let's just leave them.
I don't think we'd ever do that.
We would not.
I don't think we would ever do that. I have no doubt in my mind that we're not going to meet our referendum requirements or that we're going to, you know, that any school isn't going to get what it should get. However, the cost of where we're at and the situation we're in currently, I am highly uncomfortable with. I hope I'm not foreshadowing and I hope it goes the way that it's supposed to go. I encourage you to look really closely at labor costs over time and double time. Costs a lot of money for school districts in that summer slam. And we're giving you extra days because we're shortening our school year. Please use them. Please be good with the labor.
Yup, and completely understand. I mean, we asked for this longer summer.
Extra days against our school calendar. Just, they have a longer summer to work.
Yeah, I mean.
No, 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 they have a longer summer to work.
We have about thirty percent more time.
Than some other school districts.
Yeah, we have about thirty percent more time this summer than we did last summer.
Yeah.
And, and as you mentioned, premium time is expensive, so we're still trying to be, you know, best stewards of the district dollars to make sure that we're being the most cost-effective when planning this out.
And just for the board's sake, that's why I mentioned what I did about the school calendar, not for next year, but that shortened summer in phase three. One of the things we are gonna need to strongly consider, I know there is a huge desire to immediately align with District Ninety-nine. We may not be able to accomplish that in the third summer. It might actually be the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, because we have to be cognizant of not shortening that summer so much just to immediately align with the high school that we end up shortening the construction schedule by a week or two and end up paying double time. So that is something that we are strongly considering not recommending. It's gonna take a lot of consultation with our construction partners, but we do have to be careful in that summer of two thousand twenty-six as we're leading up to completing all this, not shorten that so much that we end up having overages and double time and everything that you just alluded to.
One final question and then I'll release you into your happy state. So the, in this kind of scenario, we're obviously on the other end of this right now, but phase three is a consideration for a BAFO, a best and final offer situation of bidders. We, we haven't done that here. I don't think that it's prudent to do that here. But please, I would consider allowing time for BAFO in the next bidding structure so that we can go back to bidders and say, please give us our best and final, because you're a competitive bidder and we need to make sure that you have the best numbers that you can provide us. I know that bidders are.
Yeah, I think we can take that in consideration and make sure we need to review with the district council to make sure it complies with the.
Correct.
Public bidding.
With the requirements of the public bidding. Yup, yup. Appreciate you. Thank you. That was a much better presentation.
Just as a, I just wanna say thank you.
Before we get to thank you, though, I have two questions that aren't a thank you related.
Oh, go.
Fun thank you.
I'm not the only one.
To pull you back from that happy state just for a few more minutes. There's, there's a note in here on. There's far less risk when coming out of the ground on the additions. We saw about a five million dollar increase in estimates from HVAC, drywall, electric on being totally out of the ground.
Yup.
And so I'm wondering, what, what's giving us the confidence that those same estimates are not gonna be significantly higher for electric, HVAC, drywall, for all of our new addition work?
Yeah, and, and what I mean by significantly less risk is, once your bid and construction begin, you know, day, you know, you break ground, right? At that point forward, that's where I'm, the risk that I'm speaking to. The risk that you're, you know, the risk prior to that for the bidding, that's what we're trying to accomplish with that one point five million of added. Look, we don't trust that we're on track to hit the original number, so we're pre-adding that in there. So now, could we add that and then be above that even that? There is a world that exists, right? That's the, I mean, we're, we're. You can't be faint of heart in this business, right? And same with being on the board like this, right? It's, it's not for the faint of heart. It is a, a navigation. Again, the ambition right now is to set ourselves up for success through the diligence of this design period, right? Much more frequent, much earlier check-ins to say, are we on track? We, there is no way that any of the team is gonna walk out of that room without ensuring that we're gonna hit the number, right? It's an, I'm gonna say it's an impossibility, right? We just can't allow ourselves even that little bit of latitude to say we're not gonna hit that number. So. No, we can't, none of us can make promises, right? We're gonna sit here a year from now and know where we're gonna be at. But that's why, if I go back to the rolling average, right, that's why we have that, and I loved your, you know, break glass scenario, right? It's like.
I told you not to listen to that.
Don't use that. No, no.
That doesn't exist.
The, the break glass being the serveries, right? You know, if we couldn't do cabling, sorry, James, but if we couldn't do cabling and we needed to get that one hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of there, can't even see, one eight, one ninety, right? That's the break glass scenario that I'm talking about, right? We can't do interior doors. Is that the absolute end of the world? Can't do cabling. Is that the end of the world? No, right? We have to have the base scope in there. And if we have to pull the rip cord and pull those scopes back, that's what's gonna have to happen a year from now, right? But, you know, if, I'll, I'll take it all the way up to just before promising, we're not, we can't be there. And I would say bullies in, in the room here and they'll go up all the way up to just before promising, that we have to be there as well.
Absolutely. Because we'll look back at the totality of the project.
Yup.
And then we'll start pulling back the curtain, which I don't wanna do. It takes too long.
Yeah, 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 we don't.
Has to be on track.
Yeah. So, uh, again, that's, it's a warranted question, but that's, there is risk there, absolute risk there. And that's what we need to manage against over the next, this entire design period, over the next twelve months, ten months.
The other thing, I appreciate that. The other thing that I'll ask is, and this is something that you shouldn't answer today. Appreciate the, blocking the percentage fee on the original budget as opposed to the new budget. I'd, I'd encourage us all to, as we work on the same side of the design table, I don't see us being adversaries in this work, ever. And so I'd be interested in seeing if we, if there's an opportunity for us to have a stake in the phase three work, just like we have in the phase two and the phase one work, where fees are contingent on or locked at the original budget so that we all have a reason to keep the budget under or at where we expected them to. Again, don't answer that today, but I would, I would encourage our teams to see if that's something we can build in now when we're still eleven months out. So the scope creep is a shared interest of all of ours, not just the district's taxpayers. I'll just, I'll, I'll go where Tracy was probably gonna go, which is a, a big thank you. This is a heavy amount of work, a really big project. Obviously, for us, it's our first time going through it and really appreciate the, like, being on the same side of the table with us on this work. That means a lot. Do we expect everything to go perfectly? Absolutely not. But I appreciate how folks show up when things don't go perfectly, to, one, take ownership, two, help us plan, and then three, help us see how we can prevent it from happening again. And so just kudos to the team behind the scenes. I'm sure many of you that are working your butts off to get us to where we need to be for our students. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate that. Like I said, it's not for the faint of heart being on your side of the table, not for the faint of heart being on this side of the table either. And again, I, it's a big kudos to those, you know, we all have to step up and take ownership for the things that go well. But we have to take, likewise, take ownership for things that don't go well, when they don't, and make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is thereafter collectively as a team.
Very much appreciate it. And again, appreciate the team, Dr. Russell. I know you put a lot of time into this, Kevin, James, probably too.
Absolutely.
Time's probably been, but everybody's probably been part of it at the district office, so much appreciation.
Getting pulled in all the time.
Yeah, all the time. Everybody's in the room. But we really do appreciate everybody's hard work and I do appreciate the accountability, the, you know, transparency, the clarifications and, you know, coming to the table with the knowledge on what everything is so that we can better understand it. I would have liked a presentation like this a little while ago instead of today, but I'm glad that we have it. I'm glad that we have that information. So appreciate it and let's forge onward.
Forge onward. I would, I would concur. This last slide, again, is just a recap of the conversation, just so it's all kind of in one spot. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
No, what, what he said.
Well, thank you. I know, I know this was a lot of work over the last couple of weeks. And I've watched him, I know one of the things that we were looking at was even the, the servary stuff, but even the cabling, because a lot of that stuff is done on E-rate, so we weren't sure if we were gonna have to.
Right.
To move that a little bit and wait till our next round of E-rate, you know, to do something along those lines. So the, the work that you took us to get here is great. I'm looking forward, I think, to getting our next steps after, after this so that we are very much in tune and in line, ready for all of our phase three stuff. So at, at some point, that doesn't have to come from you guys. I think that has to come from, really kind of make sure that we're, we have our trajectory going forward. So, you know, we might start asking questions even a little bit earlier and make sure that, that, that everything is aligned.
Well, I think that's, you know, when we do these updates each month, right, I'll be here each month, right? So it's as we get into the budgeting that we've now communicated and said we're, it's going to be, you know, we've already had three budgeting exercises for the last round, right? But we'll have more on this round, just to ensure that, hey, hey, guys, we say we check in, we're on track. Hey, guys, we say we check in, we're on track, right? So we're not sitting here twelve months with a big surprise.
Twenty percent.
Ten months from now, yeah.
Right. Well, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Okay, this brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but is not intended to be a time for members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to a future agenda by admin, or being addressed by administrative staff in moments when it's appropriate. I have a lot of thirty minutes tonight. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Do we have any? Cards in the basket? None? Alright, is there anybody here that would like to make a public comment tonight? Alright. Then we'll go on to the approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in your packet of materials? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting as presented?
So moved. Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion carried to approve the minutes from the November eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting as presented? We have a consent agenda tonight. Is there any item a board member would like to have considered separately? Alright, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report, financial statements, consisting of the list of. consisting of the list of bills and summary, and board member travel expenses?
So moved. Second.
Melissa, please call roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Joshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved and present, is presented in the packet of materials. We have a recommendation for action tonight, the Elementary National School Lunch Contract. Is there a motion to approve the non-competitive procurement contract with open kitchens to provide a national school lunch program in our elementary schools from January 6th, 2025 through May, let's see, is that 20, 23rd, 2025?
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just congratulations. This is another good cost savings through the district, so thanks for all the work.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion carried to approve the non-competitive procurement contract with open kitchens to provide the National School Lunch Program in our elementary schools from January the 6th of 2025 through May 23rd, 2025?
It should be a roll call, that's-
I rescind my aye.
I rescind my aye and we roll call.
Yeah, all right. Melissa, please go on.
Aye.
Member Joshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the non-competitive procurement contract with open kitchens to provide the National School Lunch Program in our elementary schools from January the 6th, 2025 through May 23rd, 2025. We have a construction consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately?
I don't think so.
Looking at you.
Yeah, asked and answered.
If not, is there a motion to approve the construction consent agenda consisting of the bid, group number two, phase two of elementary schools, and referendum furniture purchase for the middle schools?
So moved. Second.
Melissa, please call roll.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Joshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the construct, construction consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. Couple of announcements, Wednesday, the 18th at 3:45 PM will be the next legislative committee meeting. Is it actually going to take place at O'Neil?
That one, we're still up in the air on. It will likely take place here so long as they're thrown, but we'll send that out.
Okay. And then Wednesday, January 8th at 3:45 PM will be another legislative committee meeting, also marked as O'Neil, but, but we'll announce if it, if it ends up moving here. And then Monday, January 13th at 7:00 PM will be the next regular board meeting right here at Downers Grove Civic Center. Is it just a week? Okay. The board will now meet in closed session. Is there a motion to move to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district that's five ILCS, two C1? And then discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purposes of the approval of the body of the minutes or the semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by section 2.06 and 5 ILCS 122C21. So moved. Second. They're competitive today. All right. All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Joshi.
Aye.
Member Ellis.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the board will now move into closed session after a short recess. Let's be there by 8:58.